In May. I'd like to begin with the Treaty Land Acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are signatories of Treaty Five and that we reside in the traditional territory of the Nsichu Yase Cree Nation. The school district of Mystery Lake is located in the community of Thompson in the province of Manitoba. Manitoba is located on the traditional and ancestral lands of the Nehito Ininu Cree, Dennisouli, Dene, Meti, Inuit, Essinenu, Oji Cree, Inishinaup, Ojibwe, and Dakota Oyata, Dakota Nations. The school district of Mystery Lake remains committed to honoring the treaties in the spirit of truth and reconciliation. We are all treaty people. We have in front of us the approval of the agenda. Oh, yes, I have regrets from trustee Humby. And only the one, eh? Um, yes. Thank you. And we also have regrets from Superintendent Bartlett. Now we will move to item number four. Approval of the agenda, can I have someone move? A trustee Sharker, secondor? Trustee Young, all those in favor? Oh, go. Yes, go ahead.
Just on our, on the, if you click on the agenda, it brings up, I think it's from last meeting. I don't know if it's just me, but.
Of the approval of the agenda.
If you click on the number four item, it brings up, I think that's from last meeting because it mentions trap.
I don't see that at all.
No, okay, so it's just me, but.
What color is your? Are you with the right color, are you blue or green?
I don't know.
This may be the.
Are you in the right meeting?
Yeah.
Are you the revised one? There was two of them.
I'm right on the, well, even so, I mean, last meeting, so. Uh, revise. Okay. All right, I'm revising as well as well.
You're good?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Okay, any other remarks before we move or before we vote? All those in favor? Good, carry. We have in front of us the adoption of the minutes for this session. Can I have someone move that we still accept? Trustee Sharker, secondor, vice chair? Any comments on this one? Any additions? Okay, all those in favor? You're right, okay, good job, good job, okay. Super. That's right. Delegations of presentations, none. Item number seven, business from previous board meeting, none, alright. Uh, item number eight, Superintendent of Human Resources and Policy Report. Um, Superintendent Bartlett is not with us, so she will report next meeting. There is something there for you to read if you'd like. Item number nine, Superintendent of Educational Services and Programming.
So, okay, I have submitted my reports, just gonna highlight a few things. I attended the IA, um, Indigenous Academic Achievement Advisory Committee Meeting in Winnipeg. We went through the new planning and reporting templates that are required. We do receive a large sum of dollars through this grant. Um, we just wanted to make sure that the reporting templates are in alignment with the Moment to Wisdom document. And we are going to be undertaking IA guidelines, which will be happening in March and April. And then we looked at the BISAP, the Building Student Success with Indigenous Parents Tool and Response. And that too is aligned with the Moment to Wisdom document. Um, with Curriculum Services, uh, we've been writing a piece for the upcoming Mass Journal. The title is Authentic Engagement, Millennium Parent, Grandparent, and Extended Family Involvement. Uh, we just finished that copy today, so we're just gonna go through one more edit and then we will send it for submission. But it's, um, it's around the work that's been happening in the district with families, grandparents, extended family. That happens after school hours, in their summer time, um, just how that, that program keeps building and building and building. So, uh, pretty proud of the work that's been going on here in the district.
In this context, who's we?
Uh, Curriculum Services.
Oh, curriculum, so they write it as a team?
Um, who's written it, we wrote it on behalf of, we've talked to them, is Caitlin Weber from Lursey, Kelly Tate from New Mercy, and myself.
Okay.
But because we've been involved in the work, we've been able to make sure that family outreach and community connectors have been part of the, the, um, that piece, so. Um, yeah. Mini Winter Festival will be starting next week. Deerwood School is the first school, March fifth and March sixth. So the first date is the full day activities, the second date is the wiener roast, so, um, more than welcome to go and check out what's going on in the schools. Uh, reminder that tomorrow, February twenty eighth, is Pink Shirt Day. It's Stand Up Against Bullying Day, which should be every day, but tomorrow's the big reminder. Um. Uh, so, the, um, we had received additional dollars this year around, um, career coordinator's position. Uh, I've not been successful in filling that position. The province has required that we have a teacher in that position. Um, and I just haven't been able to find somebody without taking somebody out of a position already. So, I, I did approach Career Trek and asked them to put together a proposal that will work with our grade seven and eight students. So, I've received that, um, so that will be moving forward very shortly. Um, that is a twenty-five thousand dollar program, but, um, very confident. They've been doing work with our district for the last couple of years, so it's, um, providing students with opportunities around, um, skills, they're gonna go into Valley, Havelitford Valley, there's gonna be all sorts of different, um, locations that are available for our students in the north, so, um, that's gonna be coming up. And, uh, just been working on securing space for some, um, off-campus programming and dealing with some personnel, personnel matters, which is taking up quite a bit of time. And then, I believe the next is mine also, the Canadian Student Alcohol and Drug Survey. So I'm just gonna go into that, nine point one. You all received the letter that was sent from the province, um, asking us if we would consider participation, participating in the Canadian Student Alcohol and Drug Survey. This is something that's done at the national level. So, we've had two schools that have been chosen, Woburn Community School and Artie Parker, and this is for grade seven and eight students. And the questions are there, um, they have followed all of the proper protocols and procedures. And the questions are basically around alcohol and drug use, uh, but there are some, um, questions on vaping. Vaping is something that's been on the rise, so it'll be good to get some of that data. Um, there's, um, some other questions around living situations, being bullied, stuff like that. So, it's, it's for a national survey, so I, because it's external research, have brought it forward to the board for approval. So, um, do you want me to read the recommendation?
Um, I can do that.
Okay, perfect. Um, and I think, yeah, that's, that's my report.
Okay. Any questions for the superintendent before you move to the resolution?
Just clarification, so the proposal for Career Trek, that is for the position that we get funding for, for them to take that over?
Yep.
Because we can't find a.
Yes, yes, and so it'll just be for this year, but next year we'll, we will advertise for the position. We actually have a northern Suits meeting planned for next week because we're all kind of in the same boat around, around that position, so.
And then the second one was, uh, the off-campus, have we heard back from the province on, on that? No?
No, no, but I think it's pretty hopeful, what they were asking. I asked Kelly to, to look into that and she's provided all of the information that they requested, so.
Okay, thank you. So, moving out of that report, we have a resolution in front of us, I'll read that. The recommendation in front of us is that the Manitoba CSADS Representative Sharon Pazek be allowed to proceed with the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Health Canadian Student Alcohol and Drug Survey with the students of Artie Parker Collegiate and Wapunaw Community School, and that they share the results of the study with the Board of Trustees. Can I have someone move that we accept the resolution? Vice Chair, secondor, trustee Lawson? Are, are there any questions or any concerns? Any comments, yeah?
Just, I, just wondering, I understand Artie Parker and I understand Wapunaw, is it, uh, resource, reason why they're not doing all of the schools?
Uh, they select thirty-one schools across, yeah, so those were the two schools that were sent.
Just because we have those two, we have two other community schools, that would be interesting to know those numbers.
Yeah. So each school that does respond, as long as they have, I think it's twenty or more surveys, the school will get two hundred dollars honorary to be used back in their schools, so a little bit of incentive.
Yeah.
Dude, sorry.
Are they gonna share just the information from our schools or from all the schools as a whole, like collectively?
Each school will s, receive a school level roll-up, so they'll get their own, own information.
Can we see?
Yeah, can we snip it?
All of it, or no?
Um, I could ask, why not?
I would think they would do a final report of all the findings, would they not?
Oh, for sure, but, but they'll also provide a school level.
Yeah, I think that would be nice for our schools.
But nationally, they kinda wanna see what the trends are also.
Of course.
Yeah, yeah.
Hmm, okay. Okay, any other questions? Yeah?
Yes, yes, and that, once we approve, I'll let her know and then she'll send the package to the schools and they'll send that stuff home, for sure. And it's voluntary participation, for sure, yeah.
Sorry, I don't want to be a bit of that.
No, it's great.
I just know what, what the information we saw with the youth behavioral survey that all of our schools did. I'm just wondering if we were asked if we could conduct the other schools locally and not have them do it, if it would allow us to use their survey? Is, is that possible, or, like, obviously it's free, or what would the cost be to have all of our schools involved? I would just really like to have a picture of all of our schools and see, especially if you do community schools, on what they look like.
So the questions are very similar to what we already asked in the youth behavior survey. So I don't think that data would change a lot, and that's just, our youth behavior survey is Thompson only, like, those are only our schools. So I think that probably, not sure if they would be able to provide that, like, we could probably use these questions, but who's rolling up that data?
Right.
Like, there's some work that, that goes with that piece, so.
I think, so, I think they're not from those schools, so this would be a, a little bit of data from this area, because all the schools are going to the high schools, so we are talking about the high school and random use selected initiatives, so. Yeah, different.
Okay, any other questions? Put it to the vote, all those in favor? Yeah, okay, carry, good, thank you, everybody. Secretary of Treasuries' report.
Circulated in your board package, the expenditures year-to-date, as of February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, we're fifty-six point six percent through the school year. Our year-to-date expenditures are fifty-three point three percent, so we're tracking well. Our total expenditures year-to-date as of February twenty-second, twenty-four million, seven hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars. Uh, no big surprises still at this time, so it's an uneventful school year, which is very good for finance.
The hydro's gonna be going up soon, it's cold though.
We made it through, uh, this, uh, January much lower than, uh, last year, so.
Just two new pillars for the purpose now.
Okay. Let's read those out. So I'll just read out all the present donors right now. So, we wanna thank our breakfast donor, um, donors for the program here in Thompson. So the donors we have right now are Show Kids You Care, Child Nutrition Council of Manitoba, Breakfast Club of Canada, the Winnipeg Quaker Organization, P C Children's Charity Nutrition Grant, the M K O, Walmart, Manitoba Nurses Union, federal government, Thompson Ford, Canada Safeway, an anonymous donor to Artie Parker for two thousand dollars, thank you, anonymous donor, for Willie Apartments, and Aurora Dance Recital. So, super, thank you so much for our local supporters for supporting breakfast programs. And hopefully, soon we can put the provincial government there.
Also included is our review of undesignated operating surplus. We did receive our, uh, in-year revenue adjustment from the province. Um, it was nominal for us, so there will be no adjustment to our surplus required for the year. Um, it was as we had planned. So our June thirtieth operating surplus still remains at one million, six hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred fifty dollars, um, under the four percent that is allowed of one twenty-six million, so, good news. A reminder that tomorrow at six o'clock is the public budget presentation for next school year. Uh, we also will be, uh, recording it, fall will have a live feed, apparently.
Hmm.
Yeah, so, uh, come on out then.
Wear your pink.
Wear pink, that's all I have.
Are you gonna be coming?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, super. Okay, new business. Item eleven point one, Board Policy fourteen, the Decision Making Matrix. We have in front of us a recommendation from the Policy Committee. Policy fourteen is the Decision Making Matrix, it's been reviewed by the committee and requires updates to reflect current practice in the management of staff extended leaves. The Policy Committee recommendation is that Policy fourteen be updated as follows. The superintendents must get prior approval for staff extended leaves beyond what is allocated in the provisions outlined in their respective collective bargaining agreements. Can I have someone move that we, uh, consider the, the recommendation? Trustee Sharker, secondor? Trustee Lawson? It's open for consideration, anybody have comments? Yeah?
I think it's just important to know that this is replacing the current because of the contractual, the CBA, right? This isn't something we've created, it's just something that's in collective agreements, and we're putting that into our policy.
Yes. We're, we're aligning policy with practice, with the same collective. Um, anybody else? So you can see there the attachment, you can see the changes in the red, that's been made to the Decision Making Matrix. Any questions? No? Okay, we'll put it to the vote, all those in favor? Okay, eyes have. Item twelve, Correspondence, we have in front of us twelve point one, Advocating National Food School Program. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees submit a request to Ms. Nikki Ashton, the Member of Parliament for the Churchill Keweenanook, ask you to advocate for the inclusion of funds to support a national school food program in the twenty-twenty-four federal budget. So if you remember, we did submit a few weeks ago, uh, a similar, uh, letter that the MSBA suggested that we send to the federal government in support of this. This is a letter to our Member of Parliament so that she can advocate on our behalf also for this program. Um, as it, you know, it would, it would benefit our students, of course, to some great degree. So, can I have someone move that we still consider the letter? And the letter's there for your consideration, trustee Lawson, secondor, trustee Sharker? Any comments, folks, about that letter? It's, it's almost the same as the one we sent to the federal government. It's just, uh, now, now, Ms. Ashton has something that she could advocate, uh, in Parliament for us. Yeah?
Just a, would, we normally not CC our MP, when do we send a letter to the federal government?
It was overlooked, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
We followed the template, or.
Yeah, right.
We, I followed the template and the MP wasn't on there.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
We did go to all the, the, uh, standard ministers.
Yeah.
This may be the one before was sent, and then maybe somebody made that comment and say, did you, did you, did you CC the MPs and maybe had not been done?
Yeah.
So maybe that's a, a mistake that the MSBA made.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so going forward.
I don't think sending a person one of those letters is a bad thing.
No, yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's important that she is, as our Member of Parliament, know what we're advocating for.
I was more thinking that she didn't get two letters, and that was kinda where I was thinking.
No.
No, not for months.
No, because she's not a member of the city government, yeah, yeah.
So I think this is not the direct question, so this is the additional question. City would need to get any information how the food school program would be implemented. So if, so this has come to like as a extended, right now we are thinking this could be a false neck, that you had option to warm up or something. If you need to prepare meat, pull meat for the last, we need to allocate fund for institutional kitchen.
Yes.
So we have to keep something in our mind, if, so.
So, you're right, um, we have a meeting, uh, March fourth to start looking at the planning and the templates, and then we'll know the dollars, and then we need to start having those conversations where we're gonna need commercial kitchens, and there might be some, some upgrades and maybe some changing around of rooms, so, end of March, April, those are the plans that we're gonna have to look at. So we have a, a meeting Monday morning.
This request is just advocating at the federal level that they put it into the federal budget.
Yeah, so just to address, no one can construct any precedents, like pertaining to like using a food handling service, like the common kitchen or something like that. So you have to submit your application to the legislative government.
But this letter is just asking the federal government to put dollars in their plan.
To match provincial dollars, yeah, it's just advocating for monies.
We are thinking the criteria, the, the current law of this election mandate, they're, they're putting a food program, so.
Yes.
Eventually they will send the money to the school board to implement, to bring their election mandate visible to the public. My question is how you teach it, would you have the facility? They're open to the backseat, I don't care, but, but other schools would have.
Yes.
But that's not the most, that's on the table.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with this, I mean, it's a good point, and I think going into the future, we'll have to address that at some point, but it, it has nothing really to do with this letter right now, yeah, yeah. Any other comments before we vote on it? All those in favor? Yeah, okay, good, carry. Okay, we have twelve point two, Manitoba School Boards Association. We have the e-bulletin there for your consideration, it does not require any action, I'll just look quickly.
Our board ballots were signed this evening, we'll send those in tomorrow morning.
Oh, yes, did you see those, I signed those? Okay, yeah, so we've signed the board ballots, uh, we'll send those in so that at the convention, um, I will pick those up and then my, my backup will be trustee Sharker, yeah.
Um, I was like looking through this the other night, one thing that I thought was interesting was age program. Um, and so the Legislative Assembly is looking for grade eleven and twelve students, or, I mean, legislative type ages, and I just wanted to have, like, would we have a, um, a law class, or, I don't know how that would work with being seven hours north, but it's, might be something worthwhile to throw to the high school, see if there's any, any interest in that. I don't know if the program entails when, it would have to go down all that, but that's, that's a pretty cool opportunity.
Yeah, but I would think you would probably have to live within commute.
Says a page is scheduled to work every third day the legislature meets, require afternoon attendance except on Tuesdays and Thursdays when the lodge meets mornings. Um, they must be able to work evenings when required, fifteen hours in each two-week period, pay period, so.
Lots of ways, yeah.
That's probably not manageable for students, which is too bad, right?
Yeah, unless, unless we sent one there to live, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I just went, I, and, uh.
Well, I mean, hockey, we do it, we send people for hockey, you know, I mean.
Just there was a school that has hockey, right? Like they're going to, uh.
And they're not our students, uh, there's some other divisions, they become, yeah.
So, I guess so, I mean, that's, that's what, I mean, but that's what you'd have to do, right?
I, I had to use Parliament in high school and with law, so.
Oh, I think that would be nice, but I think this is to be a real-life page, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was training, anyways, I thought it was neat.
Yeah, no, it is absolutely neat, yeah, it, it just goes to show.
Underized.
Yeah, it, 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 it's something you would love to have a student here have that opportunity, it just, it can't because they don't have the supports for our students to be able to go down and, and do such. But no, I think that would be a dream for a senior to be able to do, so I agree with you. Okay, good, uh, number thirteen, item thirteen, Policy Committee Report.
Committee met on February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. We need to process it by law, section ten, rules of debate and, and others in coordination, it's not there yet. But one question relates from one of our committee members in Hank, another question. So, the rationale behind why we need two readings of our procedure by law, so that I can do the same. So we request, uh, Subhan and Angel to discuss whether this is, are, are not. To get an explanation where we will follow this. Another, we give for, uh, Board Policy sixteen, learning and learning, and programs and services, and Policy seventeen, safe school, no changes made. We leave for C fourteen, and we updated decision that takes, maybe, that is could adjust how we can manage the staff extended leaves that we can put up. So, maybe we can, we can not, uh, maybe this doesn't yet.
Do you see what I mean with that three reading thing? So, it, there were, there were a couple resolutions, when you make a change to a board policy, it needs to have three readings. But apparently in Robart's rules, if you need to expedite it, you don't wanna wait for three meetings. You could do it, a reading the first meeting, and in the second meeting, you can have two readings in the same meeting to pass it, and that will count as three readings. My question in the Policy Committee was that, the reason why you have three readings is to space it out over three meetings in case the conditions change or for people to reevaluate. But if you have a, a single meeting where you have two readings to expedite it, you're going against the philosophy of the doctrine to have three separate readings. Because three separate readings, for me, would imply that you have time served between the readings. But if, if you say, hey, let's, let's move that we accept it, everybody vote yea, and then read it out a third time and say, everybody accepted yea, yeah, you've had technically two readings, but it's really one, because there's been no time has, has gone by. Now, apparently, now, did Angel ever report back on that, probably not yet, so, it, 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 it might be that that is a board policy and it contradicts Robarts, or it might be that that's a Robarts policy, but I don't know if it, if it makes complete sense. Because if we have three readings in order to make sure that time has lapsed for due consideration, if you have a single meeting where you do two readings and pass the resolution, you're defeating the purpose of the three readings clause. You see how, as an academic, that bothers the hell out of me? Yeah, do you know why? Does it not bother the heck out of you?
No, I do not know why. Um, but look, if we're looking into the process, the Policy Committee is revising an individual policy at every meeting, and they meet once a month, so, if you're changing Board Policy eight and it needs six weeks, and the next minute you're putting in Board Policy nine, we don't have eight fixed, you start to, like, either we only bring these forward once or twice a year, and right now, we're bringing them every time you change a policy. So I think the whole procedure needs to be looked at as to how often these come forward for change. The borrowing bylaw, we do once a year, but these board policies, we're doing almost every meeting. And if you start doing a six-week read, you're gonna overlap.
But then, that becomes where policy is not aligned to practice, if you're gonna take two meetings, then you might as well just make it two readings, as opposed to three. Because that, that.
A bylaw requires three readings.
Yeah, but, but that's three sessions, you see how that bothers me? You see how that bothers me?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah. So, but i- is it Robarts that allows that, do you know? Yeah, it's just a guideline, so that's why the discussion, so I think to go back to this, you know, I don't not to beat the horse, but. But I think that's the intent of a three reading rule.
Yeah, but you'll start bogging down our meetings. With all these policies.
Well, then why don't we just make it a two reading rule then? Yeah.
So. I might like if we look at this recommendation for for the policy fourteen that we just updated. We're not seeing that too many times, we've.
That's not a bylaw.
This is bylaw, yeah, changes, this is the Policy Committee talking about the.
It's the procedural bylaws.
The procedural bylaws, yeah, sorry.
The procedural bylaws being revisited continually. And there should be certain times where you're reviewing the document, but it's such a big document.
Yeah, and I think, like, I'm with you, I think that there's some things that are so cut and dry, you don't need three individual readings. But there may be some where it's very contentious and the community might have to then, I mean, the tax the taxpayer. Dollars that, yeah, you know, and then we've we've all we've all experienced, whether it's provincial or federal, where they rush things through and. Yeah, I I don't I don't wanna do that.
No.
So I think it gives you the rope to either extend it or not.
Yeah.
Right?
I think that's the reason.
You know, but I think it's keep the top of mind and that if a trustee wants three individual individual readings. There's you can do that, we just do it in two.
That's true, it's the will of the board. Well, we're gonna, so really, it's not, it's just, it's just, you know, so we're gonna follow up with them, MSBA, find out from the parliamentarian why this so.
Because I think too on on the procedural bylaws, you still had you need a majority, major majority, right?
Yeah.
So it's it's still, if it's a contentious vote. It might have to go to.
Two to three readings if you don't have a major majority, it might be something along that lines. Okay, anyway, so that just went up.
I'm with you, I mean, but it gives you the role, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's true, that's true. Uh, okay, thank you, MD, that uh. We took a little bit of a bypass there. Thirteen point one point one, so we have a board policy in front of us, the Policy Committee has a recommendation. As outlined in the board policy role of an elected school board on the page four. School boards are responsible to evaluate performance of themselves, the superintendents in the school district. So I guess in in discussions, to go back to the discussion, the trustee Sharker and and some of the members of the Policy Committee. You know, we had asked Angel, the Superintendent Bartlett previously that, you know, when's the last time the trustees have done? A self evaluation. And uh it came out that it has happened not often or perhaps sporadically. Right, so trustee Sharker thought, well, well, maybe this is something that we need to visit. So what the Policy Committee is recommending here is that the Board of Trustees distribute, which you see in front of you. A self evaluation form that each trustee can complete as outlined in board policy seven point six B, the board development. So we can discuss this, so can someone move that we discuss? Trustee Lawson, a seconder. Uh trustee Young. Yeah, so what do you guys think about this self evaluation, so you can see it see it there, this is one that Superintendent Bartlett found, uh that was used last time. Did did either of you two ever do this? Okay, so it's it's probably not been used for some years. Is this something you folks want to to visit, because the policy does stipulate that we do do evaluations, uh trustee Sharker?
This is a one template, so if you want to modify this template, so I have some opinions, so the. Total number of board meetings in a year you attended, the total numbers of standing committee you attended. If you participate outside of the regular board meeting, like in school busy.
Yes, you could. Like a kind of like engagement or attendance, yeah. You could, yeah, you could you could doctorate to be indicative of that.
I I think that if we're gonna evaluate our staff, there needs to be a self evaluation as well. Uh it is tough because our evaluation truly comes at election time.
Um that at the end of the day, yeah.
I I think that I'm not against doing evaluation at all, but I think. Us as trustees, meeting outside this room and talking about things is. Would potentially have more of a benefit than than a piece of paper, right? Like, I don't wanna say retreat, but you know, I mean, something that's, there's a small agenda, we talk.
Or we talk about amongst ourselves.
You know, there's no real formality to it, we just talk.
Yeah.
Because how many times do all of us get together when there's no business, we don't, right? So, um but at the same token, I I don't think a retreat is a bad thing. If we, you know, there's there's pressing things that are going on or, you know, the fact that. This is, so if you guys haven't been six years old at least since the last trustee evaluation.
I think this one's quite old, yeah.
Right, so and then we talked about the boring bylaws or, you know, something unofficial, but yeah. So again, I I I don't think we can ask something of our staff. That we're not prepared to do ourselves, and we did that with like the safe schools.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
So, yeah. And yeah, I I think too, I mean, we in the two years, we haven't known of our superintendents either, right, so. But I think, so yeah, let's start with ourselves and we'll go there.
Sure.
I just think that we need to make sure we're keeping ourselves in line because we have asked. We have gone back to Policy Committee as of recently to make sure that we're aligning everything that we do, right? So we have asked our superintendents to align policies that state inside our policy manual. So I think that this is inside our policy manual that we need. To step up.
Yeah.
Follow the same.
Well, that comes back to the collegio, like the 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 workshop, like to come together as a group. Yeah, I agree, vice chair. Any thoughts?
Yeah, it kind of seems pointless, you're spilling out an evaluation form on yourself and you're reading it yourself. And that's where it ends.
I think that we can do with it as we we want to do with it.
So like, well, what's the point if you're doing it yourself and you're reading it yourself and it's going no further than yourself?
So are you questioning the form or are you questioning the policy?
Yeah, we're questioning the policy, so there's no point, it's not going any further, you're filling it out. You're reading it and then it just stays with you, so it doesn't matter what I write on there. I could write any on anything, you would never know.
What I learned from my school, like self-evaluation is something like you think before you go to bed. What I did wrong this day? Then make a note, I'm I'm not going to this mistake toward, this is self-evaluation. Not to give punishment to someone, this is what was self-evaluation, okay, this year I didn't attend this. This meeting, next year I'll do this better, so this is striving to do something better in the future.
It it's a reflective exercise, yeah. Oftentimes, they have self-evaluation to help you, you know, reflect, especially if you do one every year, you can look at it. You know, but but at the same time, w- w- we we could do the self-evaluations and share them with each other. I mean, that's that's, I mean, if you want to. The policy is very vague, so so we don't know. We're not obviously gonna post them on social media and say, hey, here's Hank's self-evaluation. For everybody to read, like like what trustee Lawson said, that our evaluation will come at the next election. But on 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 top, I I think as a reflective exercise is valuable, so I think, but your comment is sound, so. I guess we have to decide as a group. To go back to what trustee Young said, if the policy says it, it's there, we should do it. But if 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 the policy is not of such value, we can we send it to committee and say. Should we change the policy? Yeah.
The policy reads board development. All trustees engage in the pursuit of board excellence through board development and trustee development, training and education. The board evaluates board effectiveness by adhering to the policy monitoring schedule and the annual board self-evaluation process.
So it's.
So this form is a part of that?
No, this was a form that Superintendent Bartlett had found that was previously used.
So what is the normal process for the board self-evaluation?
This is the most recent form that we've located.
The last time they went to Jonas Arnold.
So sorry, sorry. Yeah.
The last time there was an evaluation, they um reached out to Jonas Arnold and she helped set that up.
Well, maybe that's might be, if 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 this form we're not happy with, we don't need to do this form. But we have to decide, are we gonna do the policy, and if we're gonna do the policy, perhaps extending out, if we don't do this form. We might wanna reach out to MS.
Defeat the motion, yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll do, we'll send it back to to committee and send it to the MSBA.
Cause the motion is right now saying distribute the evaluation form.
Yeah. And we're not even, they they don't even. Say if we're gonna do it, like.
Well, yeah, you could just distribute it, I could say.
It's been distributed, yeah, I think trustee Sharker's point is that he wanted us to to talk about it. And and if we need to modify it, modify it, yeah, so. This is the best that we've have, yeah, I mean, there's nothing else.
So two points, I think this is an awesome thing for retreat.
Yes.
Uh and two, I don't believe that we can be evaluating people that we're not looking to evaluate the board's effectiveness.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
You know, um so. And I don't think it's a bad idea to take a step back outside the boardroom and say, okay, how do we handle that? Can we do better next time?
Oh.
Right? Well, we're only ever talking about things when we're on the board table, how you kind of grow as a group, you know? Um I mean, I agree with Lindsay, I mean. I I I reflect that during the board meeting, I'm sure we all do, right, so. But I do think it's important that. I mean, things aren't always gonna be rosy and peachy and as a group, we have to know where we stand and uh. Yeah, you're only gonna get that for doing uh something outside the table.
So I'm not, it's been moved, it's been seconded, yeah, go ahead.
I do agree with what trustee Lawson said, I do think that we need to be evaluated by our peers, which is us. But this is pointless, like you wouldn't know if I did it or not, I could just say, yeah, I did it, sure. But in actuality, I didn't fill out a single thing, so there's just my. My thing with this is there's no point, no one knows what I wrote down or if I even wrote anything down, so it's wasted time, really. Like, we need to find something more effective to evaluate ourselves than something that no one knows if we actually did it.
Yeah, I'm getting the sense that nobody likes this form.
Absolutely.
Am I getting, am I reading the room? Okay, so so what I'm gonna recommend is that it's been distributed, we've discussed it. Eh?
Yeah, call for the vote.
Yeah, I think we'll call for the vote, let's.
What's the motion again?
The the motion is that we evaluate distribute it. And I think the intent of the recommendation is that we distribute it and complete it. Now, if the sense here is that we don't want to complete it because we don't like this format, we can, yeah.
The motion reads that the Board of Trustees distribute the trustee's self-evaluation form for each trustee's completion. As outlined in board policy seven six B, board development. That's what we're voting.
So we're voting.
Can I ask for a a amendment to that recommendation?
Trustee Lawson, trustee Young. Will have to agree, if it's a friendly amendment, yeah.
Um the amendment be that we obviously don't do this. But we look for something that is actually effective.
So we can shut this down and then do another motion.
Yeah.
So or that the recommendation is is that we decline this motion and put in a new motion.
Yeah, what's best, send it to committee and send it to the MSBA, is that what you're thinking, or or do you wanna do like do a retreat?
I don't think the committee itself should decide what we do, I think we as a whole should.
Meet as a committee of the whole?
As what we do and that what works for everyone, then that's what we'll do.
Okay.
We we have some strategic planning that we're gonna be doing.
Yeah.
Very near future, this should, this could be a topic as well, right?
Is that what you, yeah, okay.
What I can also support the motion, do it ourselves. Or not, right? Uh I don't think there's anything wrong with supporting the motion and and this document, but I think as a board, we know that there will be further discussion. On board effectiveness and and uh how we're doing, so.
So, do people want to approve it and then do it as an exercise and then revisit it? Or do you wanna, yeah, let's put it to vote, let's put it to vote, all those in favor? The motion is that we have distributed this and we're going to complete it. So all those in favor? Two, all those against? Three, okay, the against have it. It's been defeated, now. Do we, are you are you proposing we move? To what you just spoke to?
Yeah, like find an effective way of evaluating the board ourselves. Like the Policy Committee maybe find a few things that we could look at.
Okay.
And then us as a whole vote on it, not just one thing, because we don't know what everyone around the table would like.
So what would a motion look like, that we send it to committee? They talk with MSBA for some models and then the models.
Come back.
Come back to us when we do our strategic.
No, it has nothing to do with such strategic planning, it's just our evaluation.
Whatever we wanna do.
Whatever we wanna do, deal with it, I mean, if we have to deal with strategic planning, we could throw it in there.
This hasn't been done in, I'm gonna probably say ten years, like, have you ever had a trustee evaluation since you've been on board?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so what did they do then?
Um, well, they reached.